Okay, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, welcome everyone to our town meeting. If we could, we'll just go ahead and I'm gonna call our town meeting to order. And we just need to have an election of a moderator to take nominations from the floor and vote on that. Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none will close the nominations. All those in favor? Alright, thank you. Eligibility, you want me to read the eligibility vote? Yeah, so eligibility vote at the town meeting for all of you folks in the audience here. Any person who is an elector of such town and any citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or severally, severally, who is liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list of such town. Reference Connecticut General Statute Section seven dash six. Clerk is on.
Special meeting of the electorate and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Berlin will be held at Burlington Hall, Council Chambers, two forty, Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut on Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three, at six forty-five P M. For the following purpose. To accept a non-budgeted appropriation of the state of Connecticut Youth Service Bureau and the amount of three thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars for the deposit in the child's youth services revenue account and appropriate grant account subject to approval by the Board of Finance dated at Berlin, Connecticut, the seventeenth day of May, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. So now this, Mr. Sherton. Um, so that would be the resolution.
So, yeah, somebody has to really.
Yes, resolution. Thank you. Second on that? Okay, now discussion on the resolution. Do we have any discussion on this, folks, the council or, or anyone? Anyone here? Anyone? You folks in the back? Anyone? No, nothing? Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the discussion. And we'll take a vote on the resolution that's on the floor. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, so moved. And meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. We'll wait a few minutes for our town council meeting. Alright, number two down. One more, one more. The rest won't be as quick, unfortunately.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, hello? You can't hear me, though. We could talk to Mars, but we can't talk to Donna in Hartford.
Plus it up here. Okay, I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I apologize. I'll do the best I can circumstances. Thank you.
We got it. We know you're busy.
Okay, thanks.
With the state's business, too.
Yes.
Alright, so it's time. So we'll go ahead and call our town council meeting in order if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Rizzo. Councilor Russell. Councilor Vich.
Here.
There you have a form.
Thank you. So now we have our audience, audience of citizens. If there's anyone that wishes to address the council on anything that's on our agenda and or not is welcome to now. So we have Sergeant John Flynn is here. Welcome. John, how are you? Yes, oh, yes. And just your name and address.
John Flynn.
For the record.
One oh three Heartland Terrace. I'm also the union president for the police, police union. I know tonight you guys have down further on the agenda about the, about the pension. As you can see, some, most of the people here are working tonight, so they might not be able to stick around for that. But as leader of the union, I really want to extend my thanks to Mark U. Arroche and many, I do so many other people were involved over the last three years. Denise, Paula, so I, you know, both John Clett, last chief and Matt McNally are current chief. And the members at a council are gonna hear about it tonight, and I know they've been keeping you briefed on it. You've made this police department a competitive police department. You're gonna see a lot more people coming here. I think you're gonna see a lot of people, more people staying here. So what you did was a great thing for the town of Berlin and for the people that serve you every day. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. It's a, it's a great package. And I, you know what? We had some rubs along the way. But you know something, Mark? You said you're gonna do it, and you did it. And I appreciate it. So do they. I just wanted to extend that before because I don't know if everybody's gonna be able to stay when the part comes up, and I know it's a formality for you guys. But I didn't want, I didn't want to go out being sad that we really appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, and, and you know, everybody, like you said, everybody cooperated. So from the union, you know, your members, obviously members of our police department, and it was a real team effort. It took a little bit longer than we would have liked it to take, but
Over that, have a play in that.
That was part of it. Yes, it was. But we, the main thing is we got to the finish line here. We're just all about to cross it in the next, you know, this meeting and next meeting, so.
Think me and Arroche are gonna go get drunk next week. Anyways, that's, that's all I have to say. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank, thank you. Thank you, John. We appreciate that. Anyone else here or on Zoom that has anything for the audience of citizens? Alright, hearing nothing. Go ahead and close our audience of citizens. We have the mayor's update. I just wanted to mention a couple of things real quick. We just had a wonderful Memorial Day parade and presentation at the, at the town green, so it was a great day to remember our veterans who gave their life for this country. But, you know, I just wanna say let's remember them every day, not just on Memorial Day, but the town, as always, the veterans did a great job. We have a wonderful Veterans Park that, that, and our Gold Star Memorial, which keeps their memories alive. So that, that's a great thing we have here in Berlin. So let's just remember that, please. I just wanted to mention this, too, real quick. You know, there was something in the Hartford Business Journal. They, they took the Greater Hartford Municipal Mill Rates and they took twenty-five different surrounding towns, not all necessarily Hartford County. It went from Hartford, West Hartford, Granby, South Windsor, Newington. I'm just reading some of the Middletown. Wyndham, East Hampton, Avon, and the, the lowest mill rate out of these twenty-five is Berlin. So I think we're doing a pretty good job here keeping our taxes low. We just lowered the mill rate again based upon the, the last budget we just passed and unfortunately, folks that live in Berlin, there still is the reevaluation of their homes that we just went through. There will be, you know, some tax increases depending upon how you're, how it came out with the revale, but that's why we lowered the mill rate to not add any additional taxes into the homeowners and our businesses because of the revale. So our mill right now was thirty before. So in the next year, it's thirty-four point three one this budget year. And it's going down to twenty-nine point five six. So, you know, the council worked on it. Board of Finance did a great job. Everybody pitched in, so that's a good thing. I just wanted to mention, this is Pride Month, so we did a proclamation last year. Obviously, Berlin is an inclusive community. We strive for diversity amongst everyone. We want everyone in our, our town should live without fear, prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based upon gender identity or sexual orientation. So just keep that in mind, you know, as we go forward this month. And I also just wanted to mention, also, we have the Juneteenth coming up. That's obviously new federal holiday, and there is a celebration at the Peck Memorial Library on June seventeenth at eleven A M. to three thirty. There's several different speakers there, there that will be there. Which was, I attended it last year. Some of us attended it from the council. They had, they had a good presentation, so that's coming up on the seventeenth, Juneteenth, of course, is the, is the nineteenth, Monday is the actual federal holiday. So keep that in mind. Obviously, we, we support that, and we did a proclamation last year regarding that. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna read that at the, at the celebration there on the seventeenth, but we, we had, you know, which I didn't even know until we did the proclamation, did some research that we had. You know, the Underground Railroad was here in Berlin, and we had some homes that helped slaves from the South when they escaped that we would, you know, get them to freedom. So it's a nice little feather in the cap of Berlin. So thank you for all that. And we'll move on now. I know we have a lot on our agenda tonight, so I'm gonna try and get through it as quickly as possible. We have, now we have our consent agenda, so the counselors have read one to, what is it, fourteen? Eleven. We've read all these. I know we have. We get the packet ahead of time, so if there's nothing unusual, or if we, if there's any comments from the council members, now would be the time before we take a vote. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move that we accept our consent agenda as presenting.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on that? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Alright, so now we have a public hearing. We just need to go through and then for our, for the officers here in the audience that after this public hearing, which, which should not take just a few minutes, but we have the pension presentation, so. Okay, so here we are here. So I'm gonna call the public hearing to order at seven ten, let's see, let's go by Apple time, seven oh eight by Apple time. We seem to go by Apple time instead of the clock on the walls a little fast. So I'm just gonna read the purpose of the, the public hearing. The Connecticut Assistance Act Tax Credit Program provides a tax credit to business firms that make cash investments in qualifying community programs conducted by tax-exempt or municipal agencies. The community programs must be approved by both the municipality in which the programs are conducted and by the Department of Revenue Services. A tax credit equal to a hundred percent of the cash invested and available is available to businesses, to business firms that invest in energy conservation projects. Tax-exempt entities desiring to obtain benefits under the N A A A must complete an application submitted to the municipal agency overseeing the information, implementation of the proposal. The overseeing municipal agency then completes their portion of the application and submits it to D R S on or before July first of each year prior to submitting the application to D R S. Each municipality must hold a public hearing on all programs and applications. The governing body of the municipality must vote to approve the programs. So this year, there's two proposals from the Prudence Crandall Center, one from the Kensington Congregational Church, and one from the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House, Inc. The Prudence Crandall Center provides a comprehensive array of services to victims of domestic violence to Berlin residents, schools, and community groups. Kensington Congregational Church's historic seventeen seventy-four meeting house serves over five hundred members through community outreach programs and activities, and the Worthington Meeting House primarily serves the town of Berlin and the central Connecticut area. It will be an attraction for the town and will provide meeting room and event space to be shared by the Berlin Historical Society and other community organizations. All these three groups wish to submit proposals for the twenty twenty-three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program. So that's the purpose of it. We have, we also have a letter that will be included in our packet from the Berlin Historical Society that obviously supports this and would like to get grant money to fix up that house, which is one of the I think, as we were talking earlier, I think one of the, is it perhaps one of the oldest meeting houses in Connecticut? In the state, yeah. So, so it's a great piece of, of history that, that Berlin has here. Okay, so now we have our public here. We have public comments now in our, in our meeting. So if there's any comments from anyone in the audience here or on Zoom, now would be the time to make any comments. Just give folks a minute. We see anybody? I don't see anybody there doing. Somebody online is raising their hand? I see no little, little hands going up. Okay, so now we're, no, no comments from the public. We'll go ahead and close the public meeting and the, the public comments. We have council, council comments. Anything, folks, you wanna add?
I just wanna say, support all three of these agencies. I think it'd be a good thing to make them eligible for this program.
Okay, great. Alright, appreciate that. Anything else?
An appeal beyond just the
Yeah.
Just the grant.
Oh, from the Historical Society, from Lorraine, yeah.
Just wondering a little history on that in terms of they said they're looking for the town to partner with them. Meeting House.
Yes.
So what's our history in terms of supporting that endeavor?
So we've tried to do the best we can with that, the meeting house to fix up the meeting house. It's very, very expensive. So we had this discussion with the Historical Society a few years ago and pull them, you know, and, and they have done it. They have done it since it was to get, you know, private funding and grants and, and, yeah, we, we said if you could find, God, you know, bless you, if you could find us some kind of benefactor that would, would have some fun. So I, I know they've been working hard on that with fundraisers and different things, so they have been looking to. Um, yeah, they do. Yeah, they've, they're pretty experienced in getting grants, so it's just the the quantity of the funds. Yeah, it's, it needs a lot of work. It's, you know, from what, six, what is it, seven, sixteen hundreds, seventeen? No, it's okay. Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there's maybe they could appeal to the business community.
Yeah.
We have a lot of construction.
Right.
Companies right here in town.
Right. They could.
Electrical, there's a big electrical company that just built their own facility right there on their own turf.
Right. We can make that suggestion to, to the rain.
Be able to rally all of the various folks who are in construction.
It'd be great, but harder trouble is they don't have a, a design, and because it become a public space, there's so many federal state regulations, the cost just becomes exponential. And the building was never designed to house such a structure and the handicap bathrooms and the fire issues and everything in the elevator and and by the time you got done, you'd butchered a building. It would no longer be an historical building. Building with some old boards on it. So it's a very complicated issue, but I admire these folks. They worked hard for a number of years, and if the town can help them, I hope it works.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to let you know that yesterday the budget went through and there was a small amount of money that was allocated roughly ten thousand dollars to the, for the Berlin Historical Society to fix the copula that's on, on the top of that building, the meeting house. There's little things that we can do. That was just approved last night, literally, with a few other things for the town. I think, I'm not sure, Mark, but I'm pretty sure we sent you an email on that, the breakdown. I know Roche should have it as well. So there are things, Donna, that we can do as, as a town to reach out. And, you know, as your state legislators, there's, there's things that we can do to, you know, hopefully through deep D E, you know, D E C, D E, and, and, you know, to try to make improvements to that building. And then there's also guidelines that they have to go by because they really have some strict restrictions on what you can and can't do. So we could talk more about that, but I just wanted to let you know that at least it was a little bit of money that was set aside for, for that project. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Donna. Thanks for, for working on that, getting those funds to help them. Uh, anyone else? We're good? Okay, good, good input. Okay, we'll head and close the, the town council comments, and at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public meeting at seven fifteen, and we'll have a vote on it later on our agenda. So on to our agenda. So new business.
Alright, good evening, everyone. So the first item on the agenda is the review and discuss the police department draft pension plan document. As you recall, the town council, we worked with an underhut committee. You came back to you with the, the basic parameters, and you charged the union leadership and the town to work with the attorney to come up with the pension plan document. As Sergeant Flynn mentioned, it was a team effort. And we're very pleased with Attorney Butler, who will be joining us shortly from Reed and Riga, gave us good counsel and advice. And it was open book right from the beginning, so there was no surprises. At the end, we all worked from every step right throughout with full transparency. I, I think the plan that you have in front of you makes real good economic sense. It sticks to the basic parameters that you provided. And also, I think it's attractive and competitive. I believe it will be able to attract and retain police officers. At this point, what I would like to do is to turn it over to Attorney Butler, who would give you a summary over you. You already have the plan document with you. And I hope you had a chance to read it. And once he is finished with his brief presentation, give an opportunity for all of you to ask questions. And then after that, I will talk about next steps. I think we are almost there at the finish line.
Great.
With that, Brendan, if you can hear me, I'll
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Arrocha. Good evening, everyone. As Roche said, my name's Attorney Brendan Butler. I'm an employee benefits attorney at Reed and Riga. It's been a pleasure working with Arrocha, Paula, and all of the police representatives. I do think we have what is hopefully a finished product, and I'll just give you a brief overview of kind of the major provisions. In my world, everything tends to be somewhat complicated and intricate, so I'm gonna just give some high-level introductions to certain points in the plan. And then, as Roche said, if you have any questions about specifics, we can get into that. But the plan is set to be effective July one, twenty twenty-three. It's going to be applicable to police officers in the Berlin Police Department, but specifically, it's gonna be applicable to two groups. One, those police officers that are hired on or after July one, twenty twenty-three. And then those police officers who choose during the sixty-day window, beginning on July one, twenty twenty-three, that are currently participating in the town of Berlin Retirement Defined Contribution Plan to cease participation in the D C plan and come over to this plan, the Town of Berlin Police Benefit Fund. That window is going to be offered, and if an employee decides to do so, they will become a participant in the Town of Berlin Police Benefit Fund and will no longer be an active participant in the D C plan that currently exists. The reason I say active participant is conceivably that individual would still have an amount in the D C plan because what's happening is the Town of Berlin is going to determine a buy-in amount for this Town of Berlin Benefit Fund. That benefit, that buy-in amount's gonna be calculated and then funded by the individual's account under the D C plan. The town will fund any difference if there is a, a difference between the calculated buy-in amount and what is currently in a participant's account under the D C plan. But any excess could conceivably remain in the D C plan, so there could be funds of officers in two plans. That being said, there is also a Town of Berlin Retirement Income Plan that currently exists. That's a current D B plan, excuse me, defined benefit plan. Those officers will not be eligible to participate in this new plan. The plan is to be administered by a committee appointed and approved by the town manager, and that committee shall include at least one union representative. I do want to say, I know that this is kind of an overview here. Currently, I'm not aware of how the plan is adopted through Berlin's procedures. I'm sure you already have them because you have plans adopted, but I just wanted to throw out that Connecticut law requires that a municipality that is establishing a new pension plan either adopts the pension plan by ordinance, or if the municipality does not have the ability or the power to make ordinances, then it's done through a resolution adopted by a two-thirds vote of the members of its legislative body. With respect to participating in the plan, all police officer participants will contribute eight percent of his or her compensation to the plan. The town will pick up, I'm using quotes here, those contributions in accordance with Internal Revenue Code Section four fourteen H two. Put very simply, picking up a contribution is, it just means that the town resolves to do this, and it allows these contributions to this plan to be treated as employer contributions for federal tax purposes, meaning that they don't have to be included in the participant's current income. So really effectively, it's just the town withholds at eight percent and contributes to the plan on behalf of the employee. It's, it's kind of a, it's, it's kind of a allowance that the I R S allows municipal plans to do since and, and, and give the tax break to the municipal employee. What will be required and still will be required, we haven't done that yet. There does need to be some sort of formal action of the town adopting the, the, or, or resolving to allow pickup of these contributions. That can simply be done through minutes of a meeting, resolutions, anything like that. So we could draft language that any that would be required. We would just need to know how formally this action would take place. The normal retirement benefit under the plan for an officer, a normal retirement date of an officer is the first day of the month coinciding with or next following, the earlier of age fifty-five and ten years of credited service or twenty-five years of credited service. One of the terms that apply throughout the plan is that any of the officers that transfer in that sixty-day window period that I mentioned earlier will be required to participate for five years in the plan in order to be eligible for normal retirement benefit. That is, there is an exception unless that individual reaches the age of sixty-five before completing five years of participation. That term was put in after discussions because there, it, it, financially, it would make sense to require these individuals to have five years in participation before they start drawing a benefit from the plan because the town is obviously contributing a certain amount to fund the benefit, and they wanna make it fiscally sound before benefits start being withdrawn from the plan. Upon attaining normal retirement dates, an officer will be entitled to a single life annuity, and it would be calculated as two percent of participants' average earnings. And when I say average earnings, it's a three-year high average, so whatever three years of the officer produces the highest average. And that two percent will be multiplied by the average earnings, then multiplied by the years of credited service, up to twenty years of credited service. Plus, if applicable, for officers who are longer tenured, two point five percent of the participants' average earnings multiplied by each year of credited service in excess of twenty, up to thirty years. And so any officer working past thirty years will not be required after thirty years of service to keep contributing to the plan, because they're basically only going to be receiving a Bennett, benefit that calculates up to thirty years of credited service. That being said, I did just wanna mention, for those officers that are coming over from the D C plan in the sixty-day window and elect to do so, they are going to be credited with their years of credited service from their original date of hire. So they're not gonna be losing their prior service with the Town of Berlin Police Department. There is an early retirement benefit under the plan that is age forty-five with ten years of service. They can elect to receive their retirement benefit commencing at normal retirement date, which would equal their accrued benefit they would be entitled to at normal retirement date. Or they can elect a benefit commencing on the first day of the month coinciding with or next following their early retirement. their early retirement date, and that would be actually adjusted. So it'd be a reduced accrued benefit. There is a disability benefit under the plan. And that is a participant who becomes totally impermanently disabled under the definition in the plan. And essentially, that's that a total permanent disability is a physical or mental condition resulting from bodily injury or disease or mental disorder, which wholly and permanently renders the participant incapable of continuing service with the Town of Berlin Police Department. I do want to note, we made it very clear that a disability will be determined by two physicians, one who the officer would would have brought to the table to determine his disability. And then one the town brings to either confirm or disagree. And if there is a disagreement, then a third physician shall be appointed, and that would be by the plan administrator, so the committee. And that would break the tie of determining if a disability exists. But the benefit under the disability provision is that they would see, receive a monthly payment of one twelfth of sixty percent of their average earnings, so that three-year high as of the date of their disability. And again, after discussions, this is one of the, this is one of the sections of the plan that was discussed and hashed out. A disabled participant will continue accruing years of credited service as of their date of disability. And so they they would, even when disabled, still be able to accrue those years up to thirty years of credited, credited service for purposes of calculation of a retirement benefit. With respect to vesting under the plan, it's a ten-year service requirement essentially, and that's relevant for purposes of those police officers who terminate prior to normal retirement or early retirement. And if they do have ten years of credited service, then they will be considered fully vested with respect to the calculation of their benefit. Again, there is that five-year participation requirement for those officers transferring over to the plan from the DC Plan. So conceivably, if somebody comes over with fifteen years of service from the DC Plan, they can be fully vested, but they still have to have that five years of participation or reach age sixty-five prior the, you know, completing five years of participation to be eligible for this, you know, vested benefit under the plan. One thing I did want to point out, it is a requirement in all municipal plans that take participant contributions is if in any scenario, an officer starts receiving a benefit and then finally finally receives the total of his benefit, and that benefit does not equal the accumulated contributions that said officer contributed to the plan. The excess of benefits that was contributed to the plan on the officer's behalf would have to be paid out to either the officer or his beneficiary. And that's, that's a municipal law requirement. As, as you know, ERISA, which is kind of my world, applies very differently to municipal plans, but that is very clear and that is present in this plan also. So basically, they, the baseline is they have to, at all times, be able to receive regardless of vested status, their accumulated contributions, because they're always vested in what they contribute to the plan. With respect to another thing that was discussed and hashed out, the officers will be provided an opportunity to choose between a single life annuity, which is the normal form of benefit under the plan. But they'll also be able to elect to receive their benefit in a ten-year certain in life option. That essentially is a guarantee of a hundred and twenty monthly payments. So their accrued benefit is broken down actuarially to a hundred and twenty payments. And in the case that an officer dies before receiving a hundred and twenty monthly payments, the remainder will be paid out to his beneficiary. And then finally, another option they will be allowed to receive under the plan is a joint and survivor annuity option with a designated beneficiary. There will be three different joint and survivor annuity options they can choose from, a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, and fifty percent. I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but basically, the higher the percentage they choose. So if they choose a hundred percent, the smaller the amount the officer gets, the greater the amount a beneficiary would receive. If they choose a fifty percent, it's basically they're receiving half their benefit. The beneficiary receives half the benefit. There's a lot of actuarial calculation goes into that, so please don't fault me for my very simple explanation of that. Other than that, I did just want to point out. No, I think I, I think I covered what I wanted to with respect to the high level things. The, the important part will be to make sure that this is adopted in accordance with the provisions I referenced with, with respect to Connecticut general statutes. The pickups are resolved to, formally resolved by the town to be done before the plan is effective, so prior to July one. And then also, we've told Paula and Arosa, I know they're aware, but there will also be work that needs to be done to the current defined contribution plan. And by work, I mean basically an amendment spelling out kind of this window opportunity and the, the ramifications of it of, for those officers that are transferring, choosing to transfer and come over to this new plan. And so I guess if, if you have any questions, the, the other articles that I didn't touch on are really, you know, simp- simple math, simple provisions, you know, the, the town is still able to amend and terminate the plan. But the collective bargaining process has to be involved because this is a collectively bargained plan. If that is going on, we did make it clear that minor and required amendments would not need to go through the collective bargaining process. But anything that, you know, is kind of a substantial change would need to incorporate union representation.
Thank you, Brendan.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you very much for that overview and that helps all of us in the room here, you know, just get the bird's eye view of it. And some of us in the room that have gone through this for a long time, we, we've got to this point, which is wonderful. For everyone, everyone work together and that's the way it should be. And certainly with the pension plan, we recognize our officers in Berlin and officers, officers around the country, not just in Connecticut, everywhere are. You know, it's a very difficult time for law enforcement a- as we know, and it's behooves us certainly in Berlin here to do the best for our officers that are out there doing the best for us. And we appreciate, you know, your service to the town and to attract and to keep the talent that we have and to attract what is a smaller, you know, recruit. Unfortunately, it's very difficult to recruit these days. We're all fighting for the same qualified candidates, all the police departments in the state, as well as the state police. So, you know, the, the better our benefits here, the more we keep the folks that we value, that have put your years in with the town. And certainly attract new folks that want to stay in Berlin and, and make it a career here. So that's why we worked on this so hard. It was not easy at times, as the union president mentioned, but we got through it and I'm happy we did. And it, it needed to be done. So it's the, it's the right thing to do as far as I'm concerned. But so folks, if you guys have comments, questions, I know what we're gonna do. We're not gonna vote on it tonight, correct? We won't want to just take, but go ahead, the process, whatever.
Yes, so today is an opportunity for you to really understand the plan because it's a long-term commitment that the town is making. And we have Brendan available to answer any technical questions you may have. Of course, Kevin and Paula available and the union leaderships here as well. So that's the purpose today. And then we've had some good news from John Flynn, that Union has already signed off on it. You know, it's all coming down to you now. So we want to bring this back to you in a couple of weeks. And then Kevin has been working with the actuaries. So July one, he'll have a number for every officer, buying them out. And we'll have sixty days to decide whether they want to join or not. Once they get, once you get to the sixty day period, end of August, we'll know exactly how many officers are joining and whatever the gap, the town will subsidize that. So on September one, it'll be ready to go. Obviously, the next meeting, we will come with some resolutions. I want to get this plan approved by you. And then the second one is to set up new trust accounts. And third one, we would also need, like Brendan mentioned, for payroll deduction. And also, we would need authorization to move their money from a DC plan to a BD plan. So we'll put all that together. I'll work with Tony Dinafro and Tony Butler to get that written out. But that will be coming back on the twentieth. And that'll give us enough time to go through the process.
And I, and I think Brendan mentioned, so for the officers, obviously, in the conversion of their 401Ks to the pension plan, they're gonna get some advice, right? They're gonna have the ability, I assume, to ask questions and how it affects them. And, right, we'll have some little bit of education for them. Not that you don't understand it already. I, I'm sure you, I know you do. But just to make sure all of their questions are answered by either Paula or whoever. You know, just to make sure they understand what they're signing up for and what the benefits are, you know, pro or con to, to doing it, not doing it. Depending, I know that it's all, you know, individual circumstances for each officer, you know, how, how it affects them, obviously, their time, time and service and you know, whatever. So I just want to make sure they have every opportunity to understand exactly what they're signing up for, which I, I know they will.
One other thing, I had mailed all this to the ad hoc committee that helped follow the initial parameters. We would also get the blessings of the police commission at the same time.
Yes, I would like to get the police commission to vote an endorsement of it. I know it's, it's advisory for us, but I, I would certainly like to see that vote. Obviously, a couple of the members were involved in the negotiation, so I would expect to know what the vote would be, but I still think it's important to get that on the record for our police commission, who I know supports, obviously, all the officers here in Berlin too. So, okay, so yes, yes.
It might be in here and I'm missing it, but do the officers have an opportunity to take the vested amount with them if they were to go and get employed? How does that work? Like teacher retirement, teachers pay into a state fund. How would that work here? What happens to their vested?
Yes. So basically.
Not that we want them to leave, but if they were to want to be employed in Newington or another town.
They don't want to go there.
So in, in short, yes, provided they have ten years of service. And also provided if they are an officer who transfers from the DC Plan, they participate for five years in the plan first. Otherwise, they just receive, and when I say vested money, I'm talking about benefit that's being calculated under that two percent formula. What their, what their benefit would be if they retired at normal retirement date. They always have the ability to receive their, well, let me, let me backtrack again because I, I don't want to misspeak. If they, if they serve that five years under the plan, they would have the ability to receive their, what they contributed to the plan.
Right.
Right. With respect to any vesting of a benefit calculation, they still need ten years of service, regardless of if they're a new hire or someone who transfers from the prior DC plan.
But they could keep their ten years with Berlin and then go accrue more years in another pension plan with another municipality.
Well, I can't speak, I can't speak to what the provisions of a, another, another municipality would do. However, one point I did not bring in, there is there are provisions in this plan, which a lot of plans do. So conceivably, you could be right, but it would allow a lateral hire by Berlin to, to purchase additional years of service. So service with another municipal police force to be credited to them under this plan. So yes, if, if the plan that they transferred to, they could conceivably do that as well.
Understood. Right. Because you might have an experienced person that we want on our force, but they're vested somewhere else and we wouldn't be able to attract that person unless we were willing to purchase their years.
Sure, but to be clear, the plan as drafted now, the attracting an officer to Berlin, and which I think this is smart. In our experience, we see this because as you are very well aware, hiring police officers has become difficult. This is allowing someone to get credit under another, another municipal service, years under another municipality. And the purchase, though, is done through the, the actual lateral hire. The town could conceivably amend the plan if they really wanted someone and, and, you know, in the future to, to change that. But right now, the lateral hire would have to purchase that, and that would be all done through a policy established by the committee of how the lateral hire wants to purchase up to five years of credited service.
Any other thoughts, Charlie?
I just want to say, I'm really glad this is finally here. I see great value into keeping the officers in town for a long term, in the community, in the citizens. I'm really glad this is coming through. My only apprehension is how we adopt it. I want to make sure that this council and future councils are required to make the contribution because our previous pension plan was neglected and it caused some financial hardships. Somehow, if we can adopt this in an ordinance that requires this be included in the budget, I would really appreciate that.
Is there something to be done to an ordinance?
Ordinance, right, could take care of that?
I just want to make sure the money's there every year.
I think we have a question I can see on the screen.
Yes, Donna.
Thank you. I just wanted to check, who's going to be managing this particular retirement account? I know Seamer's is in trouble. Something came up actually here in Hartford, having to kind of sort of bail them out, if you will. That just happened today. So I'm just curious. I know it's not Seamer's, but I was just wondering what the name of the company is that will be doing this. I don't have my paperwork in front of me. I apologize.
Kevin, I see you on the line. You'll be talking to two or three different trust accounts, you're available. Yep.
So two or three different?
Kevin, I want him to comment on it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, hi, Donna. That's still to be determined. We are looking at some different custodians and trustees to hold the assets and manage, you know, the payment. And then looking at different financial advisors. So we, we will, currently, the plan is to continue with our existing actuaries, which is probably one of the most important elements. So that we continue to have the, the sound guidance and direction that we've had. I know as, as Charlie mentioned earlier, the, the previous, the existing closed plan had some challenges. And the actuaries that we use are, are highly regarded statewide and have really helped us the last several years. So the plan is to stay with them, which will be critical.
As long as it's not Seamer's, because they had to get a bailout today. I guess things aren't too good over there. Thank you. I just wanted to ask that question. I appreciate it. And I'm very excited that this has finally come to fruition. It's, it's great in terms of recruiting and retain, retaining the police officers that we have and to get police officers to come on in. So I, I think it's, it's a wonderful thing that the town has moved forward to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments, questions now? So we have a couple of weeks. We're gonna just look at this a little bit more. We have to get some resolutions written up. There's a little bit of, a little more work that has to be covered. And then our June twen- is it the twentieth meeting, I think? Yeah. The June twentieth meeting, we'll actually take a vote on this. And I'm pretty, pretty, pretty sure I, I know what the vote is, but we won't, there's no conjecture, but I, I, you know, I, I, I'm pretty sure we'll have a successful plan here, but we'll see how the vote comes out. But again, a lot of hard work went into it. Appreciate everyone that worked on this. I know there's still a lot of hard work to do. And I want to make sure that we get the very best plan we can for our officers and that it is funded and invested properly. And everyone, you know, the town and as well as the police officers benefit from it, so.
Mayor, if, if I may, just one second, hearing the six twenty date, it kind of brings up one other point I wanted to make. That's great. Assuming that this is voted on six twenty, did I hear that the new collective bargaining agreement was passed or, or agreed upon? Passed or, or agreed upon?
Not yet, but we'll be.
Not yet.
Is, is it, is it? Okay, is it likely to happen before July first?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason I asked is.
Yes.
Okay, this plan, um, does incorporate, uh, you know, kind of the, the language that we anticipate that. Collective bargaining agreement will have, the only, uh, suggestion as an attorney who has seen a lot of things go wrong, um, is that. If this is approved at six twenty and then shortly thereafter or shortly there before, the collective bargaining agreement is, um, finalized. I would just recommend having this all signed and resolved prior to July one, if possible. Um, just because having the plan adopted prior to July one eliminates some potential problems in the future. Um, if that can't be done, it's not, it's not a killer, but, um. That is just my recommendation.
Brendan, our plan is to bring both to the council on the twentieth.
Perfect. Thank you.
We'll get it, we'll, we'll get it done before July first, it will, it will, it will be done.
All right.
I'm convinced of that, we know we will. So, with that, all right, so. Thank you, uh, Brendan for the explanation, the overview, and again, we'll just get our, uh. Everything together in the next couple of weeks and we'll see everybody on the twentieth for the, uh, for this and for the collective bargaining agreement, so.
Great, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you. Okay, on to. The rest of the agenda.
Rest of the agenda, well. I mean, it's always everything, right? The second item on the agenda. Is you, uh, asking you to increase, uh. What we need to pay, read and rigor for the pension work. So, uh, we are exceeding twenty-five thousand, so we would like you to, uh. Give us authorization to move further up, um. It's been a great firm to work with, I mean, they are.
Yeah, they're great.
Probably, you know, the, the best and they give a lot of good advice and. Work really well with the union and the town leadership, that Kevin and Paula. Very responsive, you, you recall, we had, uh, Brendan's gone right here, we had a couple of firms before, it was very difficult to get traction.
I remember that.
A couple of months and, but when he took over, he was prompt. Responsive, got back to us immediately, not, didn't fail one deadline. And, uh, when he said he was going to get back to us, he would get back, definitely.
That's great.
So, uh. I don't follow his year, but. Yep, now you can't talk from there. Unless you want to come up here. It, you have to come up here if you want to talk.
We'll get the point.
But, we get it, I think we all happy with them, so would appreciate if you would give us some more. Average, uh, we have money in the legal account to pay for it.
Yes, so if there's no other questions of Roche, we'll go ahead and take a, uh, motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to approve invoices for services rendered surpassing twenty-five thousand dollar bid threshold. To complete preparation of pension plan documents for the police pension plan not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, uh. Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you. Second item on the agenda is, third, I'm sorry, Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative grant application. So, uh, I have Jamie Miller here to, uh, give you an overview of the application, just to get your permission to apply for it. So, but I want to take this opportunity to let you know that Doug Truitt, after thirty-something years retired from the town. And Jamie's our new, um, director of, um, social services. Been with the town for a while, so. Learned a lot from Doug and ready to, uh. Take, take the lead on it, so. I'll turn this over to you, Jamie.
All right, good evening, everyone, um.
Hey Jamie, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Um, so we're just asking for permission to apply for our four thousand dollar juvenile review board grant. Um, but just. A, a quick notice is that in the actual number three, the amount of the appropriation is wrong, it says three thousand four hundred and twenty-one, so we would just want to change that to. The four thousand, I think that's probably from the earlier six forty-five meeting, so. Just want to update that amount to four thousand, but it's just to, uh, apply for the same grant that we apply for each, um, each year.
All right, hold on just a second, we'll get this right first.
No.
This is to accept the grant, Jamie?
We had the, um, town meeting earlier.
That was something different.
And that was, this is what the confusion is. So, that was. To accept the non-budgeted appropriation. So, what happened is that under consent, the four thousand was adopted.
Okay.
That grant was adopted under, um. The, one of the consent items.
Yep. This one is a multi-tone.
Well, the, the consent one is this one, no? The, the last.
Well, it's done, no.
Yeah, that's done, but.
Yeah, number eleven was the.
Number eleven was the four thousand dollar grant.
That's the five thousand dollar one, Kate.
The five thousand?
Yeah.
The three thousand four hundred and twenty-one was that, that was the, um, money that we got from. Um, that's the one that you guys talked about at the six forty-five special meeting, that was the, um. The, uh, non-budgeted appropriation that we got extra from the CYSA Bureau, it was an additional amount that we had to appropriate. That was the three thousand four hundred and twenty-one.
And then the. One for night, item number three is really actually another grant for four?
Yeah, this one is for four thousand dollars, yes.
And not five thousand?
The number eleven on the consent is for five thousand, this, this one is for four thousand.
Done. From the same place?
No, they're two different places.
Gotcha. Does it read as from the same place?
Number eleven says four thousand.
Number eleven says.
Says five thousand, our agenda, yeah, five thousand.
Five thousand, yeah, that's correct.
Well, number three will now be four thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, number three should be four thousand. It starts out to apply for the four thousand juvenile report grant. It's just the second number when it says to, um, except to appropriate it, so.
So do we need to take?
Okay, let's just go ahead.
So what do you want to do with number three?
The number three just changed that second amount to four thousand dollars.
What about the first one? Changing both to four thousand or?
No, the, the one, item number eleven, under eleven, item number eleven on the consent is fine. So this one is.
But there's two motions in number three.
It's going to be for four thousand.
Okay, that's my question, thank you. Ready for the motion?
Yes, take a motion.
Move to authorize Berlin Town Manager to apply, amplify incorporated for a grant, the amount of four thousand dollars. In the Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative Funds. And to authorize the town manager to accept the grant on behalf of Berlin Social and Youth Services. Who assign any contracts, agreements pertaining to this grant. Upon receipt of funds, will be deposited in the state opioid response grant revenue account.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Motion number two?
Move to appropriate four thousand dollar grant to the state opioid response grant expense account. Subject to the approval of the, by the Florida finance.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
That's right. It's not late, yeah, it's not late, yeah. Uh, okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Can I just make a comment? Jamie, congratulations, but I, I also want to mention that if you need any letters of support for these. Uh, to please reach out to me, I'd be more than happy to, to send something along for you, okay? Thank you, Donna, thank you so much, because I have a couple more, uh, grants that I have to write. Please reach out to my office and we'll get those done for you, thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Then item four, apply for a second grant for the Connecticut Education Network. Kim's here, so I'm going to try to talk about.
Hello, Kim.
She's applying for a big grant.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
So I am here to request approval to apply for the second part of the fiber to libraries grant. And this is a grant that's being offered in partnership with CEN, the Connecticut State Library and Novus Insight, Novus Insight happens to be our IT support provider. So back in February of twenty twenty-two, we applied for and received a six thousand. Six thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollar grant for Novus to come do an assessment of our IT network, and this is really so that. Um, they can, the state library can, um, improve IT services and connectivity around the state. And we got our assessment back in January of this year and we had a number of things on that assessment, including, um, a new sonic wall. And we also need a new network switch and some new Ruckus routers, among other things. So we just found out in May that there is a part two to this grant. And part two is, um, money to purchase the equipment and do the installation. So we have been deemed eligible for sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars. From the state library to take care of all the things that were in our assessment, and I would like to apply for that grant so that we can.
Oh, absolutely not. Of course.
Like souls.
Great, thank you for that info, that's great. Questions for Kim? If not, we're going to take a motion?
Move to approve the Berlin Tech Memorial Library applying for a grant through Connecticut. Education Network to fund network upgrades to enhance CEN performance for the library if awarded. Appropriate to grant funds to CEN grant account pending approval by the water finance. This will in turn improve performance for the library's network in general and provide much needed upgrades that would otherwise. Need to be calculated into the budget. The total dollar amount of this grant is sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Great, thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions on this from the council?
I just want to make a comment to you as well, Kim, i- if you need a letter from the office, it's always good to have those letters of support, please reach out, okay?
Thank you, I will.
You're, you're welcome.
There's no other comments or questions, we'll vote on the motion on the floor, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, I just also want to add that the new carpet is going to be finished this week and it looks fantastic.
Oh, nice.
So please come to the library in the next couple of weeks and take a look at it.
We'll do that.
Wipe your feet first.
Thank you, yeah. Good it's finished in the summer, so they can't mess it up too bad.
We'll bring, we'll bring coffee.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, no coffee allowed.
Then item number five, this is, uh, for the VNA electronic record system. Or health record documentation system renewal of the contract I see earlier. I'll turn it over to you earlier to give you a quick recap.
Hello, good evening, thank you. Hello, hope everybody's doing well. Um, so I'm just looking to continue our contract with NetSmart, it is the system that we. Function on, it, it's everything that we do. Um, NetSmart is not the ideal system, I don't think, it doesn't have a lot of automation, uh, so I am looking around for a replacement. Um, we did look at Advanced MD and CAN time, unfortunately, they're both more expensive and I didn't find reason. To increase, um, the cost for those two systems, so. We'll just continue with NetSmart for now, if that's okay, and I'll continue to look for a better system, um, that's either. A lot better, uh, systemly and will give us more reports and I'm really looking for some automation with the finance aspect because that's all. Um, or not all, but a lot of it is manual right now, so just looking for a system that can assist us better, so. Until then, we'll continue with NetSmart if you approve.
Great, thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions?
Really?
Yes.
Just a quick question, is, is the current, um, software program, NetSmart, is that? Currently, does, is that designed specific for VNA or is it a general healthcare software?
It is home care specific.
It is, okay, thank you.
And all of these do have a home care specific system. Um, it's been a little bit difficult because there are so many systems out there, I. Kind of just did surveys that went out to a bunch of different places and some had home care, some didn't, so we kind of had to weed through. And ended up with these, but yes, NetSmart does provide us with a home care specific system.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Leah? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Move to approve the continuation of the contract for NetSmart's electric. Electronic health record and documentation system for one year. For amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any, uh, further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, you too, Leah, thank you.
Well, the next three agenda items are from Mr. Steve Wood. And the first one.
How are we doing, Mr. Steve? Or Woody or Mr. Steve?
He's having a lot of fun.
Yeah, is he?
Yeah.
Good.
Doing fields.
Excellent. There we go.
Flowers are looking great, everybody.
Yeah.
Coming, okay. All right, the first one, uh, potential to discagia field, purchase of a Kubota tractor and some light towers, so.
So, we're actually moving that, we're moving that from tonight, we'll be back on June twentieth. A couple of things got brought up in the P and Z meeting that we have to work out on the side before we come to you guys and ask permission to purchase those.
Okay, so we're not going to do this one?
Table it.
Table this one, uh, that is number six table?
Number seven, uh, agreement with permitting with the water wetland, this is the invasion invasive species. It's your favorite thing for the, this time of the year.
I just come to see Donna for this one, she's not here in person tonight, so, um, this is our annual contract with Water and Wetland to treat, uh, Veterans Park. Railroad pond and paper goods pond, um, if you've been out there over the last couple of months, you can actually really see the difference already. With the products that they've been applying, um, you'll see it actually looks like rows and stripes in a golf course fairway. On what that is, they can't treat the whole entire pond at once, they can only do a third of it, and if we treat the whole pond at once. It puts us possibly into another fish kill because we take off too much dissolved oxygen and there's not enough oxygen for the fish to live. Um, the first treatment will actually be sometime next week, I believe, at Thursday at Veterans Pa, uh, Veterans Park. Uh, we will post signs around, uh, Water and Wetlands has already taken ad out in the citizen, so there should be an ad sometime in the next couple of weeks regarding that. Here we go, that we're going into contract for Wetlands to treat several areas, so everybody should be known, um, prior to the applications at Paper Goods. Because there's a lot of residential's out there, we will do the leaflets and put it in people's doors, um, and we will also post it by the waterways, so as somebody's pulling up, they'll see it there.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, we know we've had, uh, residents concerned, as rightly so. Even though I know we've noticed it before, but I appreciate you.
And we've had no complaints as of yet of the smell and the stench and everything that we've had in years past. Usually by now, we at least have ten neighbors calling and screaming that nothing's being done and we have not heard anything negative from anybody.
Excellent.
Even everybody, we've knocked on doors, had the conversations with it, most neighbors are in favor of it, um, and wish that. Keep, continue to do this.
Yeah, well, it's a beautiful pond, paper goods, all of them are, but you know, the residents are around that one, but yeah, that's great. Great. Good to hear. Okay, so any questions for Steve on this one? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Water and Wetland LLC, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. For permitting treatment, aeration and, and of invasive species at several waterways throughout the town. As this is in the best interest for the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you, agenda item number eight. Um, thanks to irrigation work at the Veterans Park.
Yes, um, so over the last several years, you guys have all noticed how fast that park burns out, so last year we put in a request into the general budget to have irrigation installed. As we started to look into putting irrigation and we found out that there is a cap. And the cap was supposed to be twelve to sixteen inches, um, below the surface and there's only six or eight inches of topsoil, so we hired, uh, Lo- Loro to come out and do a survey. And apply for permission for the DEP for us to go actually break into the Imperial Cap, do that irrigation through all of phase one. Um, that will not make it to the queue on the DEP desk in the middle of July, so we were asking to take the funds from the general fund budget. And move into the capital non-recurring in the grounds department. And hopefully be able to finish the irrigation work and start sometimes late fall, early spring of next year.
Okay, any questions for Steve?
Is there a water service on the property?
There is. We're going to tap into Kensington Water because there's no city sewer there. We will only be paying for water charges.
But there's already a line coming into the park.
You're going to tap it right across the street where the fire hydrant is on Veterans Park.
Great. Any other questions for Steve? Hearing none, take a motion.
Move to approve a transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the Veterans Commission General Fund to the parks and grounds capital nonrecurring account for irrigation at Veterans Park.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Hearing no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
That's it?
Uh, yeah, that's it.
You want to do the rest too?
It's pretty painless, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Agenda item number nine is equipment lease. Let's see, Sal's on the available there. So this is a annoying government bureaucracy thing. That's why it's coming to you. Because it's, when you look at it, it's five hundred bucks a month, but we are doing a lease to install this G P S devices on golf course carts. It's a new thing that we are doing.
The G P S?
The G P S.
Are they driving into New York off the golf course or where are they going with it?
Under the green.
Huh? Oh, is that what they're doing?
Devices and so you have to get on the green, we'll turn the carts off.
Oh.
At the reverse.
Pretty tricky.
Pretty tricky, but you know, we are, we are upgrading this to T P C level now.
Yeah, great.
Private country club. Actually, we've got comments to that.
Is that right?
New carts now, brand new carts.
That's right. I remember we, we talked about that.
You know, Sal's got all this new point of sale system and.
Yeah.
Being on tablets, you know, everything's working well. But again, you want to add anything, Sal? I see you're available.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Good. Excuse me, Rose, but sorry, this agenda was for the utility carts. Not the G P S ones.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Oh, okay. I got you. Yeah.
So we have a chance to get our superintendent, his staff, some new, three new Cushman's by redoing our lease with Easy Go. Easy Go, they're one of two major manufacturers who provides golf courses with carts to other being club car. I wasn't here when we redid this about, you know, a few months ago. But in my experience, Easy Go, what I like from them is, you know, they're fairly priced, but they have a great service program where they visit, visit us at least twice a month to make sure all our carts are good and utility carts are running. So with the opportunity to redo the lease and get the superintendent three brand new utility vehicles, I think it's a good thing to redo our lease with them and, and continue our relationship with Easy Go.
Great. Okay, thank you. Questions for Saul? But other than, the only question I have is on the motion is that last figure, I know that that's a decimal point there, the six million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. You know, I know, I know.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I know, I'm just kidding. That was a little, little pricey for the carts, but not bad. So, yeah, that's. Yeah, they're really nice. Yeah.
Rolls Royce of golf carts.
Yeah, there you go.
My goodness.
There's no questions. We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to schedule a public hearing at seven P M on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three concerning the approval of the contract of lease golf utility carts from Easy Go using P N C Bank National Association in the amount not exceeding thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. yearly payments will be in the amount not exceeding six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents, starting eight, one, twenty-three and ending eight, one, twenty-seven.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions on this one? Hearing none. We'll vote on this motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Saul.
The item number ten is discussion and action on the draft plan of conservation and development. Maureen's here.
Hey, Maureen.
Hopefully had a chance to look at it.
Yes.
I've had it for a month or so, but we have a procedure of action items that we ought to take, but.
Yes.
Going to Maureen.
What do we got, Maureen? Hi.
Evening. Um, so as you all realize, the draft plan was presented to you with a public hearing held on April eighteenth. And you made some comments. We received some other comments. The plan of concert, the plan of conservation and development committee did some additional work on the plan. And the edited draft was reposted and redistributed. And you received, uh, um, in your package, a summary of those edits and changes that were made as in response to comments. And that was been posted with the town clerk since May eleventh. And tonight, now that you've had that opportunity to review it, we're asking you that you endorse the May eleventh draft. Um, they buy statute, section eight dash.
Twenty-three H two.
Thank you. Um, the legislative body can endorse the plan in whole or in part and make comments. If you do endorse only sections, then by statute, when the Planning and Zoning Commission goes to adopt the plan, they have to vote by two thirds vote. For those sections, any sections do otherwise, but we're asking you to endorse it in whole. Clap to goal.
No, thank you, thank you.
Questions, please ask them. And Jim Mahoney is on the line as well. Just me and Sponey.
Uh, thank you.
The endorsement at this point means what?
So every ten years, the, the, when the Planning and Zoning Commission has to submit a plan of conservation, an updated plan of conservation and development to the state. The legislative body endorses the plan, agrees with the plan, doesn't find issues with the plan. And then sends that back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider in their decision whether or not to adopt the plan without further editing.
It shouldn't be surprises that any in zoning commission's been involved right from the beginning of the D O C D. So at this stage, it shouldn't be surprises from the.
We hope not. Yeah.
Yes.
We've asked lots of comments back. We've gotten very few. Alright, so we're a little bit proud of that.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, any other questions for Maureen?
I just want to say thank you. I know this was a.
Oh, my goodness. It's a monumental task for everyone that worked on it. Yes, certainly. Thank you for going.
With that, I will shout out to Councilwoman Coppola, who's also on the plan of conservation.
Yes, that's right. Yes. So she went through the pain as well. Yes.
Yes.
That's very painful, but, 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 but important, but important.
Absolutely. And the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing on the plan is scheduled for June fifteenth.
Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, again, thank you for all the hard work. I know it's, it's a tough task, but it's important to our town certainly to do it. And we appreciate all the effort that goes into it from everyone that works on it. So with that, if there's no other questions for Maureen or anyone or, or Mr. Jim there, we will go ahead and take a motion.
Move to endorse the draft twenty twenty-three plan of conservation and development as required by Connecticut statute section eight dash twenty-three, eight H two and to convey said endorsement to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jim. I know you're still here, Jim.
Jim's here because.
And so are you. You're not going anywhere. No, I can't, can't get away that easy.
Alright, agenda item number eleven.
Yes.
Uh, this is the discussion about the future of Pistol Creek properties. Uh, remember maybe a couple of months ago, we came to you with a list, laundry list of items, how we use it now and possible future uses. At that meeting you had requested, it'll be helpful for the council to sort of have a visual and understand where these properties are, what they're used for now. And so that we can decide how we want to move forward from this point onwards. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, who's put this nice package together to sort of give you a quick overview.
Yeah. Hi, Jim.
Thank you.
Hello. So as Arosa said, when I think, when the town bought the last portion of the Pistol Creek Golf Course in December of twenty twenty-two, and then subsequently in February, we started the conversation about, okay, now we've got, we own the whole course. What are our future plans? You know, are we going to change anything? What are we going to do with this new piece we bought? Et cetera. And there was discussion, there was talk about highest and best use analysis and such. And, and first we took a step back and tried to put together some information generally on the property that would be useful as a starting point for conversation. I'm just going to go through a little bit of that. And there's truly like three quadrants of the intersection of Savage Hill and Scrooshford Road that we own as, that were parts of the former golf course. And the largest, you know, and now the, the total property is ninety, in Berlin is ninety-seven point three acres. We bought it into part, we bought the initial, initial portions in July of two thousand and eight for five point four million, five point four five million. And then the last portion in December of twenty twenty-two for, for a million. So the the property, you know, I think just a little history, I guess I was around and, and some of you were when this property was bought to begin with in various capacities we were all around. But the I went through the discussion with the council at the time about why this might be a good property to acquire. And I, just to point out a couple of things. At the time, we were buying a lot of open space and you know, we have quite a bit of town protected open space and recreational areas. And one of the real assets of this property in the initial portions that we acquired was that it's in the eastern part of town because a lot of our open space we recognize is in the western part of town in Kensington area. Ragged mountain and, and, you know, hatchery, brook, bicentennial, et cetera. And this was, this was an opportunity to add some property in the eastern part of town. So that was one of the considerations. And it really, another thing, it was recognized that a lot of our open space properties had hiking trails and opportunities for public use, but we didn't really have paved walking trails. And this, this allows different uses. Families with children to ride bicycles or, you know, we've seen all kinds of uses in that, in that Pistol Creek area over time. And, and it was ideal because we also had the, the, the parking lot that was already there to support the uses. And the initial acquisition was, was the main portion of the property that's north and west of northwest quadrant. And then the, then the, the, the clubhouse on the south portion, the southwest, and then there was a small portion on the on the southeast where it abuts the city of Middletown portion of the golf course. So City of Middletown also owns a chunk of the former golf course and, and the whole cart path system there on the east side of Atkins Street. So just thinking about the property a little bit and, and that northern, the northern portion of the northwestern portion, the biggest portion. And we know the major walking trails are there, the pack, cart paths. But it's also divided through the center by a big wetlands ban. So from a other uses perspective, there's sections that are not wetlands or possibly develop for other uses on the east and the west of that. And of course, we have the dog park on the east side and also the, the handicap section of hiking trail, which is the only handicap section of hiking trail in town. Also, the handicap parking for that section on the north side of Scrooshford Road.
Hey, Jim, can, can you hold second, please? Just want to make sure everybody's oriented to this map, this large green area is what he's talking about. And then that whole one, if you overlay with this, you'll see all the wetlands that are within that on your second page there. Got it, Jim. Go ahead.
Thanks. The so then the, the portion, you know, the clubhouse portion obviously has many town uses now. You talked a little bit about the uses in February. And then there's cart pass on the, on the south side on both the east and west. The last recent portion purchased on the southwest was subdivided into a number of residential lots, like thirteen. And, you know, it has, the areas basically are in single family residential zones. There's utilities to the clubhouse. There would be utility extensions required if any development north of Scrooshford Road. So those are just some of the physical characteristic of the sites. And, yeah, I guess the, just wanted to advance the conversation a little bit and see if the, the town, the council has ideas about future considerations for the use of the property in, in terms of whether you wanted to do a highest, the best use analysis for any portion of the property. And if you do, you know, we can certainly fine tune our discussion about that portion of the property and give some guidance to the consultant that you'd hire or develop a, an R F P if you decide to go in that direction. Obviously, a property, this is a property that, that receives a lot of use now. And, you know, I think the townsfolk are, are used to using a lot of the property, but the newer portion is less, is not, that, that portion of the cart pass has not been in use. One thing I would say about that recent acquisition is, is, has an outstanding feature. It really has some of the best views in town. So if we're, if we're going to do anything with that property, we have to keep that, keep that in mind and maybe try to preserve public use so that we can take advantage of those great views that we have from that side. So those are a few comments. Happy to get involved in answering questions or discussing particular areas for our next steps.
Thank you, Jim. Um, the only thing I would think about, uh, see what my fellow counselors think would be just the last portion we purchased. Certainly, uh, you know, understand the vistas up there. I don't, I don't know, you know, we haven't obviously used that portion because it wasn't ours to use. I don't know if it'd be worth at least a little bit more analysis to see if some of that part of that could, you know, be used for something else or I hate to say the ugly word, but perhaps sold. But so again, that's the newest portion. That's not Pistol Creek. Hopefully this doesn't get misconstrued anywhere in public as it always does. Not, not selling Pistol Creek, but just, just to get some more analysis of, of that portion. Maybe there's parts of it that are more useful to the town as we, you know, incorporate the walking paths. And we certainly would like to keep areas that we can walk and look at the, the vistas off in the distance. But just, just so we know, you know, if there's anything else there that we've missed, that would be my thought. Do a little bit more analysis for us and certainly look at, appreciate this, Jim, too, that gives us the, the history and, you know, gives us a lot of information to digest here, which is great. So that's my two cents worth. What do you guys think? Any other suggestions on what to do?
Has there been any inquiries from possible developers? No.
No, no.
That portion of that portion area A dash two B. Quite an area there. It's kind of on, I mean, we go to, I go to Pistol Creek a lot. It's, there isn't, it's almost like there's a bit of a cliff there. Am I correct in that? So, yeah.
Behind the individual lots?
I'm thinking, well.
There is a cliff there.
You.
Yeah.
Road along there, not the, not the lots. Uh, area. Oh, excuse me, area two B, area two B. Um, there's individual lots there. Yeah. So the individual lots are how. So the individual lots are, how, how many acres is each lot?
So those are, I believe, one acre lots, there's a total of thirteen.
And why?
It was originally a subdivision.
Okay.
It was originally a subdivision.
Ah, before it was a golf course?
No.
No, after, that was after, that was after, that was a piece that the developer kept. Who we bought it from.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out why there were lots there. Oh, got it, okay, understood.
Is that so?
So, it would be easy then to sell them to a developer then again because they're already since segmented.
That's the piece I'm talking about, yeah, just that piece there, so no one missing, misconstrues we're selling Pistol Creek. Oh God, we are not selling Pistol Creek, I'll say five times. But that piece of it, yeah, because of that, I, I, and I don't know if it's, you know, we have to be cautious with that too, what we do, but.
So topography wise, the street Atkins Street is slightly below.
Yeah.
The traffic lifts up for the depth of what's depicted as lots.
Right.
And then drop back down to where the, most of the cart paths are and the, um, and the clubhouse.
Right, got it. Got it. Okay.
So that's the area, I, you know, again, worth maybe getting some more information on it. Yeah, right, just to see, I mean, it's certainly not.
The area that was recently developed over there, was that part of Pistol Creek? Those, there were a couple, there's brand new houses that, no, on the other side of the street. Yeah, those three.
Do not believe so.
No, I don't think that was part of it. That was private. Yeah.
Got it.
Always work.
Green is the Pistol Creek.
It was an old farmhouse that was on that corner.
Yeah.
And I believe that was a very old farm. We had thought that house was gonna get preserved, it unfortunately couldn't be.
Donna?
Yeah, I just want to point out that, um, that Atkins Street is a very busy road and the traffic is pretty, um, speedy if you will, especially since it's been paved. In addition to that, um, there is no sidewalks there and I'm not advocating that we put sidewalks or whatever, but it kind of drops off, it's almost like there's little gullies on each side of it. So, we, we just need to, in my opinion, be very careful what we're doing over there. Um, you know, there, there's a tremendous amount of traffic uh, that comes through that area, you'd be surprised, uh, you know, most days. Uh, and it doesn't even have to be at the end of the day when people are commuting back and forth. Um, it, it's busier than you think, I'm just putting that out there.
You have any suggestions, Donna, in terms of what we might want to consider?
You know, I really, um, don't have any suggestions off the top of my head. Um, I just know that it's a very busy area and that we should really try to look at everything before we consider doing anything. Um, you know, I, I don't know whether you keep it or what you do, uh, but I know that when we were looking to do something with some trails and putting in another parking area for people to park up there, the neighbors in that general area were reaching out to my office daily. They had some big issues with increasing the amount of traffic up on that Atkins Road area. So I just want to put that out there, I would not advocate uh, doing a whole hot heck a lot of anything because, um, I don't think the neighbors want that type of traffic, additional parking lots, et cetera. That's all. I know that doesn't answer your question, but it, you know, you know, you do need to take a look at the whole picture, thank you.
I think it is a, it, it would be a nice area for a more built-out summer camp facility for the town. Um, maybe not that particular area we're talking about along Atkins, but, you know, Pistol Creek in general.
I think if you use the existing building and move down that way, where there's already some, um, space, okay, that's been developed, if you will, perhaps that's something that we can talk about, but I would not be advocating. And there's a lot of swamp back there and there's a lot of wetlands back there as well.
Mm-hmm. There is a summer camp, I think.
Yeah, the Y does, the Y does.
Yeah, they do something.
Right, they use it, but it, you know, it's only right now supporting ninety students and, you know, there's no, it's not all that. They had, they, whatever they have, they do for that camp, they have to bring in. The facility itself doesn't extend itself to all that much, there's no ball fields, there's no pool, there's no, you know, I'm just, I know, those are one of the various options we would have.
Maureen?
That was fully.
The, what's subdivided, is it residential?
It's a residential zone.
Our, right? Yeah.
Yeah. The clubhouse, clubhouse sits on about nine point eight acres and then the, um, the parcel, the, this newest parcel we acquired was, was nineteen plus acres. So just to put it in perspective.
I mean, I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say this, this area one that is currently used, uh, where the leash-free area and where people are walking and your map also shows a lot of wetlands there. Perhaps it makes sense to just leave it as open space.
Oh, yeah, I would just say, no, I wouldn't mess with that.
That's that, that's, it's, it's, there's a nice parking lot, people walk across, it's heavily used. So I guess the question is,
It's up there.
The area up here along Atkins, if there's anything that we want to do. Area three, this is like a small piece on the other side of Atkins, just like useless. Maybe, maybe Middletown wanna, we can sell it to them. Small piece, it just, have you seen that it's just like a?
Yeah, what that's, I mean, that, that property up there is not the easiest to use.
Anything.
I, right, I don't really know what we do with it, I mean, you know, if it makes sense, uh, after we do agree with Donna, you know, we gotta look at the whole picture and do more analysis. I mean, if that makes sense to recoup some of that purchase cost of some of that property. Not all, but obviously, but I, I don't know, you know, we don't know, we don't, we don't know the answer to that, just, just thoughts here. Um, but that would be the area, would be the only area that I would consider, you know, if we didn't keep it for some reason.
You had the mic question.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, good Chris. Counselor Pena's had asked about, um, folks expressing interest, we had a number of different folks that expressed interest in clubhouse itself, um, I think.
To, to buy, to use it or buy it? Use it, buy?
Combination thereof.
Really, yeah.
I know in the past we'd looked at it, but because the uses would most likely be for profit uses, it could happen because of the bond.
Right, right.
Say the bond's up in twenty-five or twenty-six.
Oh, it is, oh, okay, okay.
I mean, if it's a,
Yeah.
Non-profit use hypothetically, YMCA, or somebody says a restaurant or banquet facility, the location itself is gorgeous. I think we all know that very well.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
So I think it maybe it's something where we kind of keep that in mind. Um, overall, again, the other side of the road, yes, where, where the golf course was, it is beautiful, it's very widely used. And yes, if it's possible to recoup some of it, that would be tremendous, but I think too, whatever's gonna happen to be well thought out, without a doubt.
Agreed.
Because this, this has been an area of some degree of, um, discussion and turmoil, how's that? Um, and I think whatever happens going forward, you want to make sure that it fits what's happening, uh, in the area. Again, I, I don't want somebody putting a carnival out there by any means. But there may be an opportunity.
So, on the, the back of those lots there and the, what's, there's other houses, but not close to those, right? Where, where's the closest house to those lots we're pointing out, o- over there? But. In Middletown, of course, and
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You're right, right? Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Right, okay.
There are some developments further south. Yes, Middletown.
For the south there, right, right.
On scale.
Yeah. Right, right. But, uh, Gotcha. But by those lots on, on the L there, or like up, up, no, further up, right there, so behind, where your hand? Yeah. Right, what's, what's, what's over there?
Your own farm?
Oh, okay, that's a farm, yeah. And what's below the green? What, like, right, yeah. That's all, that's all Middletown, right?
Golf course.
That's part of the golf course, right? That was the other part, right, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
People walk there too, a lot.
Yeah, okay.
Portions of that.
Yeah.
They, uh, they will need some work to make their paths as safe as ours are.
Middletown.
Is, I, I haven't walked them, but that's what
Yeah.
Else back and forth have indicated that
Yeah.
Some of those paths need work, but others don't, and they are well-used, I've seen people cross there.
Yeah.
Number of times. Even when this was in private ownership still, along Atkins Street. The town owned this linkage.
Pathway, yeah.
That then gets you across the street.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, originally linked across.
Right, right.
People use.
Okay, well, I mean, we, you know, have some information to digest there and, you know, I don't know, maybe we can
Sleep on it, Tom.
Sleep on a little bit, Jim, you know, or maybe the staff, we, we can talk about it maybe in a little while on the council and, you know, next few meetings and see if there's maybe some analysis can be done just on the, that portion there, that's.
But people are just.
Yeah, just, I don't, you know, I just don't know what, I mean, and, but, I mean, with the caveat that we don't want to get ourselves into the situation we were already in, so, um, which is why we purchased it, so we just, yeah, so I hesitate to even I know. Look at that option.
Situation.
Uh, the developer just wanted, yeah, to put reintroduce it, yeah, yeah. And, and, I mean, a- after he, whatever, when, when we bought Pistol Creek, it's a whole, right, it's a whole big story, but yeah, so we just don't want to go back to
Yeah.
The reason why we, uh, did purchase it, so that would be concerning, but, but again, still, it'd be worth just looking into at depth, you know, a, a little bit more.
I will, if I may, that the, um, due to the application that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, there are quite extensive file and include some traffic study.
Oh, good.
Testimony from the public with regard to
Oh.
The, um, conditions of the area, the conditions of the road, the, um, traffic incidents reports, et cetera, the planning and zoning file is quite extensive, um, and has a lot of information about the data for if it was to be developed at that intensity.
Oh, okay, oh, so we can.
Not being developed.
No, well, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see that, though.
Yeah, however, there is a lot of.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Data that had to be submitted with the application, a lot came to light during the testimony.
Have there been any other proposals since that, obviously, that historic one?
No, that's pretty recent.
Oh, okay, of the three hundred unit? And they were gonna squeeze them on that little?
Somehow.
About a parcel, but.
Yeah, well, it was a concept plan that went with a text amendment, it was actually a text amendment. Anything zoning.
Which, which the developer that bought that, when we bought Pistol Creek had, had a, you know, court agreement, agreement in front of the judge that he would build, you know, the single-family homes, that's what he agreed to do. In the whole settlement of, you know, selling the Pistol Creek, or when the town bought it, he kept that piece. So it was, Mr. Denopria certainly found more details, intimately familiar with how we went down that road, but, um, so, yeah, I mean, we certainly wouldn't want to, you know, jeopardize what we just went through and go back there again.
Sure.
Uh, but, you know, that's not to say we, there might be some other use or something that we're missing, which I don't, I don't know what that would be, but you know, be worth looking at it, I think, a little bit, that'd be the only piece I would, you know, look at a little bit more in depth, the rest of it. Everyone seems to be happy with it as it is, so we're happy with it. Folks are happy there, it's a great park we own and, uh, the only thing would be the building, you know, at some point, I don't know what we do with that, it's just, does seem to be wasting away a little bit, it does get used, but perhaps not as much as it should be. Hey, yell at him.
Okay. Wadsworth.
We can, that's all right, well, uh, yeah, we'll, but no, we can, yeah, I mean, if there's other suggestions people have.
And Wadsworth is a good example of, and it's a town-owned, correct? Yeah, it's a good example of a town-owned banquet facility. Now they do all kinds of events there.
Yeah, we'd have to wait, I think, for those bonds to expire, but that's coming, couple of years.
What are the bonds?
Well, because of the, uh, twenty twenty-five, it's just the way, you know, there's some prohibitions on that, but once they're, that's, that's up, um, that.
In Berlin.
Yeah, there'd be more opportunity, and that's only a couple of years away, so, yeah, that's, that's another opportunity there, so. Okay, anything else, folks? If not, well, I know we still have more to do on the agenda here and, uh, we'll, uh, save some more discussion for this and, uh, maybe look at some other information.
Great, thank you, Maureen.
Good discussion, thanks, Maureen, thanks, Jim.
On to agenda item number twelve, is, uh, in preparation for the work that Mr. Wojcowski is doing, lining up financing, we want to prepare the closing. Some work needs to be done with that property, so Jim, I'll turn it over to you for a quick recap on that.
Okay, so the council authorized, um, the town manager to convey the property, provided that, uh, Berlin Housing Authority has financing for the project. So we looked at the net, the other steps that would be required to convey the property and, uh, we reviewed the former eight twenty-four referrals to the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were referrals in twenty-ten and twenty-fourteen. But those were, the project at that point was different than it is now. So, um, we need to do a new eight twenty-four referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the sale of the property, the lease of a portion of Percival Field and, um, the lot line revision. So, basically, the lot line revision, just to, you know, uh, point out that a portion of the baseball field that, at Percival Field is actually in the Knights of Columbus property. So before we do anything about selling any portion, we're gonna first, uh, do a lot line revision to capture that portion of the property back into Percival Field. And then we would be able to pay, convey the, the balance of the property to the housing authority. And, uh, Kate was also good enough to, to point out that there's a state statute that requires before town sells a property that a public hearing has to be held. So the actions we're looking for are to do the eight twenty-four referral regarding the sale of the property, the lot line revision and the lease and to schedule a public hearing for your next meeting on June twentieth.
Okay. Questions for, uh, Jim or anybody? No? We're good? All right, we're good for motions. We'll make, take, take a couple of motions.
Move to make a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to section eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes for a lot line revision to add point two five acre portion of one forty-three Percival Avenue to Percival Field Parcel, map eight dash four block fifty-four lot sixty-nine for the sale of one forty-three Percival Avenue four point sixty-five acres after the lot line revision for the lease of four point one five acre portion Percival Field Parcel Map eight dash four block fifty-four lot sixty-five while as shown on the survey of Angus McDonald, Gary Sharp and Associates dated October fourth, twenty seventeen. That is attached here too.
Thank you, second on that? Uh, any other questions on this? Good explanation on that, Jim, uh, so if there's other questions, we will go ahead and take a vote on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved, uh, second motion?
Move to schedule a public hearing on June twentieth at seven PM at the Berlin Town Council Chambers regarding the sale of one forty-three Percival Avenue and lease of a portion of map eight dash four block fifty-four lot sixty-five for attached survey map to the Berlin Housing Authority.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number thirteen do with the small amphitheater that we're trying to work on and behind Steel Boulevard.
Oh, yeah.
Our project. Our project, we talked about this before, carry on to Chris to give you a recap.
Yes, we uh, we have received, excuse me, a grant from State of Connecticut for the, uh, we're calling the Steel Boulevard Pocket Park, which will include essentially gazebo or amphitheater, we're still kind of working on that piece, uh, we had three different firms that came in with bids. We looked at all three, did interviews with all three, chose Barton Le Judas.
That's great.
It was interesting for the standpoint that we had a couple of very qualified folks, but decided these folks made a lot of sense, because one of their partners actually is Yantik. Uh, Yantik has worked with both um, ourselves and Newport on a lot of the work, so it's good that they have folks that know intricately in the site. There's gonna be a lot of work down to coordination between construction of with three buildings and park. Um, and essentially, um, again, we have the forty-eight thousand dollars with a twenty percent uh, additional as needed. Uh, this is coming out of the grant from the State of Connecticut.
That's great. You mean, we're actually gonna have some kind of town center finally, perhaps, when this is all done?
Yeah.
That's, that's amazing, actually.
That that's the plan and.
Yeah, no, that's.
I'll keep, I'll keep hitting up uh, Newport to put rooftop seating on that little.
Yeah, there we go, exactly. Well, they're certainly going gangbusters in that new building, that's for sure, which is great. And, you know, they're, they obviously were the developer for the job, which is great, right, they showed up and uh.
They had a little sidebar.
You certainly may.
Prince of Peace Church recently went out of business, and they were a longstanding part of our community, the Chamber of Highway. And a couple of the members were hoping that the bell from their tower could be incorporated in this park somehow, they would like to donate it to the town.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not quite sure how to facilitate all of this.
That's great.
Bell out of the tower, they were hoping the volunteer fire department might help them, but it hasn't worked out, so I don't know. If anybody could make that happen.
So it's in the existing building there, Charlie, the ta- the bell obviously is up in the.
The bell's in a separate tower.
Oh, yeah, right, right, that's right, that's right, it does, yeah, okay.
They hate, the building won't be used for a church anymore, and the new owners don't want the bell, but the.
Oh, well, how the heck.
Committee in charge of selling the property would really like to see the bell stay in town and get used by the town.
That'd be great.
I um, definitely can, um, we can talk to Barton Le Judas as soon as we get them on board. Um, have a discussion, and then if there's a particular person you'd like me to speak to, Charlie, I'm more than happy to do so.
I'll get you some name.
That's great.
They came to to me.
Yes, Peter. Hey, Peter.
Uh, let me apologize for my tardiness, uh.
That's okay.
Things didn't go well down here, but that's another story. Yeah, long story.
Okay.
If um, if there's no room uh, at that park, maybe Veterans Park or that area.
Oh.
May have.
There you go.
For the bell.
That's a good idea, too.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a part of Berlin, it it.
Yeah.
Want to keep it, you know, if we can.
Yeah, I I agree, that's another good suggestion, so, yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Peter.
Okay, so um, if there's other questions on this motion, or we'll go ahead and take a motion on this item?
Move to authorize the town manager to enter a contract with Barton and the Guidance LLC for the Steel Boulevard Park Project, designed for a fee not to exceed forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and into amendments there into not to exceed twenty percent of the contract amount, nine thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. And that the funds for the said contract could be from the Farmington Avenue Development Non-Grant Account, subject to review and approval of Corporation Council.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you. Then the item number fourteen is a tax abatement for five-five-five Weathersfield Road LLC.
This is one that's actually um, very excited to bring to you, uh, five-five-five Weathersfield Road is the building at the corner of White Oak Drive and Weathersfield Road, um, and it sat there as basically a brick manufacturing building for a number of years, very nondescript, but it had left probably about four to five years ago. Company by the name of Dimeo Construction, uh, purchased the building, uh, came from Rocky Hill. Um, it literally looks like a completely new building. If you get a chance, go take a look at it, they've completely refaced it, uh, they've created jobs and very excited, this is for a three-year tax abatement on the improvements they've made, but it's just absolutely incredible that it went from a basic nondescript building to something that has amazing character to it. And we got another company from Rocky Hill, so it was a.
Yes, we, we borrowed another company from Rocky Hill, that's uh, Berlin's gain, uh, our uh, Rocky Hill's loss, unfortunately, but that, yeah, that is a wonderful building, unbelievable. Okay, well, that's great, um, any questions for Chris? Yes, yes.
Does this follow the current tax abatement program we have in, based on spending and stuff, or?
It does.
Okay.
No, it does, uh, basically what they had done is they had spent, it was about a half million dollars or so in renovation, so it is underneath a million dollars, which would be the five years.
Okay.
Get the three-year tax abatement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, any other questions? If not, uh, we're gonna take a motion on this?
Move to approve a tax abatement for five-fifty-five Weathersfield Road LLC for the renovation of a twenty-two thousand square foot building at five-fifty-five Wellisfield Road, of fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two, and thirty percent in year three, per the tax abatement policy.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Then the item number fifteen is uh.
They're in sight here.
More sidewalks, we are almost there.
I see that.
This is good stuff. Jim's been working on all these sidewalks in Berlin for a long time, so thank you, Jim, for all the efforts.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jim.
He doesn't have to show them.
What do you, Jim?
Thank you, the um, yes, just a continuation of our efforts to expand the sidewalk network, particularly, you know, in the uh, TOD area extending from the train station, the Kensington Center, we connect the town hall. Uh, now we're, we're doing some more segments now, the good thing is that we've already designed all these segments. So uh, we developed cost estimates, the state has a connectivity program, which is partially funding the sidewalks that are under construction now. And we'd like to apply for another grant from that program. Um, the program does not require a match for the construction funds, but it does not fund the construction administration, so we're proposing to authorize eighty-five thousand from the gr- grant road um, account, improvement account for bidding assistance and construction administration services for the project. And also, we need to refer this to the um, Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight twenty-four review, so uh, again, I think we've made a lot of progress on extending and connecting our sidewalks. This would be another big step in that direction if we could be successful in getting this grant.
Yeah, it's great, Jim, thank you, yeah, listen, in today's um driving world, uh, roads to have sidewalks is quite a blessing for those of us that walk or run in town, because the way drivers are, any of them are driving, not, not, nobody here, of course, I know that, but uh, there, there is, uh, it it is pretty dangerous out there as as a pedestrian, uh, by any road at any time, you know, but today seems to be worse, a lot of distractions, anyway. Any questions for Jim? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this, a couple, I guess we have three motions on this.
Move to authorize the town manager to apply for a community connectivity grant, the amount up to eight hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks on Four-Ride Road, from Winding Meadow Drive to Norton Road, Percival Avenue from Carbo Lane, Percival Field, and Robbins Road from Town Drive to Timberwood Road, and on Norton Road, east and west of Cole Lake.
Second on that?
Second.
If there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved, number two?
Move to authorize eighty-five thousand dollars for the grant road improvement for bidding assistance and construction administration services for CCPG sidewalks, if the grant is awarded.
You uh, no other comments or questions on this, uh, all those in favor, or second, I'm sorry, second. No other comments, quit, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved, and number three?
Move to refer the project for the construction of sidewalks on Four-Ride Road, from Winding Meadow Drive to Norton Road, on Percival Avenue, from Carbo Lane, to Percival Field, on Robbins Road, from Town Drive to Timberwood Road, and on Norton Road, east and west of Cole Lake, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report pursuant to eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Okay, uh, are there questions on this? We'll go ahead and take a uh. Yes, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting the second, yeah, it's getting late, we're trying, well, I'm trying to, you know, get us out of here at a decent hour, but that's all right, so we have a second, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. All right, so moved.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, um, get into the finish line.
Number sixteen.
Number sixteen.
I wish this was the finish line, but we still got more to go, but yes, I know, that's okay.
The regular agenda.
Yes, I know, I know.
I won't take too long on this, we had a public hearing, neighborhood assistance act, uh, the next step is for the governing body to to affirm the um, proposals so that we can send it to the neighborhood system.
Yes, yes, we had our public hearing and we had our review of this, so any other comments from anyone on the council? Now, we're good, we're all good? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to affirm prior support for proposals from Prudence Cranial Center of Kensington Chariocational Church and the Friends of the Worthington Meeting House Incorporated, for the twenty-twenty-three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act in a a tax credit program.
Second on that?
Second.
All right, thank you, any other, nothing, no other comments, so we'll go ahead and vote on this, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, so moved. Yes.
I have, um.
Yes.
I I asked for your indulgence.
Yeah, sure.
What I did, never did this one, so, um.
Kay, what? Come on, Kay.
Hey, I'm being creative.
I want you to.
So.
What?
Consent, item number eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Okay, on the agenda.
Okay.
Your regular item three, and the regular item three was the consent, so I reversed those two.
Oh.
So, okay, so on the agenda.
Oh, I see that.
Item number eleven was the five thousand um.
Yeah.
Dollar grant.
And there's the four thousand there.
Okay, so then the item number three on the agenda was the four thousand.
See that, yeah.
All right, so.
Yes, indeed.
In numbering them, I reversed it, so I'm gonna ask that you just read item number three again, or the consent item number eleven at four thousand dollars, so that we make sure that the.
Through the action item, the uh, action item there?
Yeah, so it's just, that should have been item number three on the agenda.
Yes.
I listed it as number.
Okay.
Eleven.
Yes. Yes, got it. Hey.
Well, I am making.
Okay, you're allowed one mistake, that's it, you're done for the, your whole career. That's it, now, that's good. No, it's all good.
We need to make a motion that puts this on the agenda, or?
I was on the agenda, I'm just gonna ask for reaffirmation.
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to apply for the four thousand dollar Juvenile Review Board Grant on behalf of the town and accept the non-budget appropriation of the State of Connecticut Youth Services Bureau grant, the amount of four thousand dollars for deposit in the Child and Youth Services Revenue Account, and appropriate those funds to the Youth Grant Expenditure Account, subject to approval by the Board of Finance.
I second on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, so moved. Yes, there you go. Okay, town managers' report, we are there.
Finished sixteen, right, the uh?
Yes, yes, we did, we're moving, we're moving here, like a, moving like a freight train here.
Very, um, I have three items.
Yes.
First one is at the last uh, council meeting, based on the uh, audience of citizens and the direction of the Police Commission. Council directed us to look into the Brandegie Lane.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yesterday, we installed two speed tables, when I say two, there's actually one.
Okay.
One going the other way, one coming the other, closer to the, closer to the parking lot.
Okay.
Uh, if if the, if it continues, um, and this is in consultation with the local traffic authority that the police department and uh, Bobak Advice and McNelly, chief involved in this.
That's great.
Uh, if if the speeding continues at the lower end, we'll install another one, but we all believe it should at least uh, reduce it for now.
Right. And the lights?
One, we have uh, what we are recommending, and we're getting pricing on it, is to put two uh, motion-censored, solar-powered lights in the parking lot, this so you don't have to trench it, run conduits and all these other things. Um, we have looked into pricing, it's about six thousand dollars each install, so looking at it like a twelve grand, but it needs to go through a poor passing with D N Z and all of the other stuff, right? So that's the update, but unless you object to it, we're gonna go get that done as well.
As soon as two lights, you'll put them up in the corners of that.
Yeah, there are different thoughts on it, not close to the house, where the, where it's all the way in the back, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, there was talk at the last meeting about maybe putting them more in the center of the lot to.
Yeah, but that's. Least recommended, no, that's dangerous.
Yeah, that'd be, someone's gonna hit it.
Someone is gonna hit it, and then it's gonna be on us.
Yeah, I put the two corners where it's darkest, right, Peter?
Are there, are there signs noting that they're being photographed?
No, just lights.
I think it's, um, there is, there is, uh, there is a sign going up there, uh.
Peter. I think signage is as important as.
Yeah.
Lights or anything else, because if if, once they know, uh, we're watching, I think that'll.
Yeah.
Up in the problem.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, there is a sign there, I can't think of what what it says, but there is, there is a sign. Um, I I can't remember what it says going up there, and the other thing I know, right, we were talking about is when the winter comes.
Yes.
Maybe we even close it off, right?
Right. With some.
With some jersey barriers or or concrete blocks, yeah, yeah, okay. What do you guys think? That sounds good, right, the lights, we've got the speed bumps, basically, right, for now, it's, we gotta see how it goes. That's gonna help, it's very dark in that corner of that park. Yeah, yeah, good, we all good?
Yeah.
We may end up getting challenged on that, though, by other residents. Well, it shouldn't be, but it's within the parking lot.
No, it's on the street.
On that street.
But the residents mentioned those.
They wanted.
They wanted those, yeah, yeah.
And it's closer to the parking lot.
From other residents.
Right. Of course, well, and the other thing, too, you know, just happened to drive up there one day, there was a officer sitting up there, too, just keeping people out the day I drove up, it wasn't at night, but he did say that the no, a lot, some of the noise they're hearing, though, is coming from the high school parking lot, quite frankly, especially the people on the one side of the street that back up to the high school parking lot, cause about, I think, a week before, they came to the council meeting about that issue, he said there was a huge eighty-car party, a big mess at the high school parking lot, so they, you know, kind of cleared the people out, and they, they did appear to be Berlin folks, students, whoever, so there is noise, you know, they mentioned a lot of noise up from that park, but the officer who patrolled it said, you know, a lot of that noise is coming probably from the high school parking lot as well, there might be some noise from the top, but there's other things going on in the top park, I think, but the noise might be from the high school, but but they are, you know, they're seen to be doing a great job, so anyway, just the, so, yeah, I think, right, we're good with those.
Yeah, the.
Moving forward.
Fortunately, the fear is, is those people will just find another place.
Well, yes, we'll move them.
Well, it'll be out of Berlin.
Yes, let's hope they're over town line somewhere, and we move them out of there.
Else's problem.
I mean, that is convenient to the turnpike, I could see it, once they fa- find it, you know, it's easy to get there off the turnpike, so maybe they'll move along somewhere else, but. We good, Peter, Donna, that's good, we're good?
Yep.
All right, uh, next one, just FYI, um, the, I think, maybe six weeks ago or so, you approved the Hattery Brook Bike Race.
Oh, yeah.
Scheduled to be on May twenty-first, it rained that day, so they have rescheduled it to June eighteen.
Oh.
EDN Fire Department, everybody's on board.
Oh, good.
I mean, next time, we'll ask people to give a rain date, I I, there's no need to bring it back to the council, the concept, we already approved, so just in case you see something on June eighteen, that's, that's what.
Hey, what is that?
So the the next one is, uh, I I don't want to steal the thunder from Tony Denafrio, but the good news with Helen Riggins case.
Yes.
You know, the town's motion for summary judgment was granted April thirtieth. Uh, that's a good news.
Yes, it is.
There is an appeal, uh, that went up on June first, I believe, right?
Oh, okay.
But. But Jeff worked on it. A long time and it's good work to get everything knocked out of. Um, then I, I don't know where the appeal is gonna go with the U S District Code, but. Second circuit.
Off to the second circuit. Okay.
I said three, that's it?
That's it. Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. So we're onto our special committee reports, uh. Only committee we had, I guess, was the ordinance committee today, right? Which we're working on, you know, making sure that our, the, uh. Regulatory and public, um, then, then the elected, um. Uh. Missions are, uh. Basically on Zoom and recorded and, uh, we allow the public to. Phone in or zoom in. So that's, but that's coming to the council right next time. Right? That.
Correct.
That, uh, proposed, uh. Ordinance, okay? So that's that. And Peter, I just want to ask you. I mean, uh, do you need, uh, assistance where you are? Should we send money or Western Union or MoneyGram or whatever? Just check it. Alright.
They may need bodies. I don't know.
Okay. Anyway, I'm sorry. So the special committee's over. We're, we're into council communications. That was my communication to Peter. What do you guys got? Any, any communication?
I have a couple of things, um.
Yes, good.
I just want to mention that we are collecting flags at the town hall. Uh, for the ceremony that we do all the time in June.
Right.
Um, I think, Oroch, are they right outside your office?
Yeah, actually, they're inside my office. They have to come and see me first. Just kidding. Outside my office, yeah.
Oh, okay, um, so, you know, if anybody has old flags, I hear the boxes filling up pretty quick, so that would be great. And, um.
Any.
The other thing I have is that I know that the Legion is doing a fundraiser dinner. I believe it's on the seventeenth. Um. For anybody that wants to come, they're doing, uh, you know, they're trying to do repairs to the building and stuff. So I think that if anybody's free, they can. Come there, support our veterans.
Is it the seventeenth of June, Donna?
I believe so, and I think, um.
Well.
And then Juneteenth, there's that celebration. I think that's on Saturday.
Saturday, yes.
I don't have the.
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth as well, I think.
Yeah, that starts, um, yes, that starts at, uh, eleven o'clock Saturday morning.
So that's in the morning.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, no, it's at the, uh, the room by the library there.
Okay.
Yeah, at the library.
It starts at, it starts at eleven. It actually goes to three-thirty, but there's different parts and I know from, right, we went there last year, you know, we. Stayed for part of it and.
Yeah, yeah.
You can make it to some of it.
I'm gonna try to. I already have them double and triple booked.
I hear.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm sure that you saw that the budget did go through yesterday and there's a few things that were on there. I think that was mailed to you, Oroch and Mark.
Yes.
That we worked on, um, different, uh, little projects. And I'm hoping to have an answer, uh, on the other big piece, uh. Within the next twenty-four hours.
Oh, great.
Okay, so as soon as I hear that, you know, about the PD, keep our fingers crossed and we'll be very excited about that. So.
Be great.
Cross.
Um, I think that covers it. And at twelve o'clock tomorrow night, I'm a free woman. Peter knows what that's like. It's been a wicked week. That's all I got to say.
Way to lay unplugged the clock.
Oh, my God. Don't even say that. Are you kidding me? My kids don't even know who I am. Well, thank you all for tolerating the commotion behind me tonight. I appreciate it.
If I may ask a question? The, the flags, uh, when is the deadline? Last day that people can drop off?
Believe the, the event is the fourteenth. So I think that Monday or Tuesday, and I think we're meeting, uh, briefly Monday about, uh, some other stuff, so. Uh, signage for the Veterans Park, so, um, I, I'll have my outreach person reach out to you and we'll get those things on to there for you.
David, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh?
Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, Peter.
Um, Friday, we graduate our seniors from the high school.
Yes, that's right.
And, and, um. Particularly gratifying. My youngest grandson's going. He's gone. He's gonna graduate, so.
There you go.
All bets are off at this point.
Well, congratulations on that.
Thanks.
Great. Let's hope the weather holds out. Let, let's hope that there's not, there's not more smoke.
Crossed on weather, that's for sure.
No rain, no smoke. I guess we'll have soot if it rains, right? I don't know.
Either that or they move us to the, uh, smaller auditorium and we'll be sitting on top of each other.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other council communication, Charlie?
Well, thank you. I'd like to send out. Had some health issues and I needed the V N A. And I can't express how wonderful they were to work with. And how they helped me and how considerate and punctual and professional. And contrary to popular belief, I support the V N A a hundred percent. I always have. And our attempts to. Alter the charter was not to get rid of anything, but to save it. But I just. Want everybody to know that they're out there and unfortunately, when I was discharged from the hospital. At Middlesex, they said they'd never heard of a Berlin V N A. So I think we need to work on marketing a little bit, but once again, I want to thank them for their professionalism and skill. They're a great help. And my other thank you is to our two state reps. Both of them voted against the Marxist Governor Bill.